Hi, I'm Robin Schultz with the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday 2/14 Committee of the City Council. We're glad to have each and every one of you here tonight. We will call me your board member.
Council President.
Here.
Council President.
Here.
Council Member Driver.
Here.
Council Member Sweeney.
Here.
Council Member Martin.
President.
Council Member Middlebrook.
Here.
Council Member McClintock.
Here.
All seven accounted for, we will stand at the court and move forward. I would ask everyone to please stand for the invitation to be led by the board. And the next standing to be led by the councilor.
Chairman Lee Fodden, we just thank you for being with us each day. Thank you also for being our protection, our guidance, and giving us your love. May we shine your light so others may see your glory in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Attention, salute, pledge.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, we have a proclamation for Park and Recreation Month. I would like for Erin Coball, the Director, and all of our employees and these board members, if they would come forward and be presented this proclamation.
Whereas parks and recreation are the central part of communities across the country, including the city of Hoover, providing spaces and programs that enhance quality of life for all. Whereas the city of Hoover Parks and Recreation Department is to unite the community by offering enriching opportunities to serve everyone, embodying the spirit of this year's national theme, Build Together, Play Together. Whereas parks and recreation support the health and well-being of residents of all ages through physical activity, mental wellness, and opportunities for social connection. Whereas parks and recreation also drive economic development, attract tourism, protect environmental resources, and strengthen community identity. Whereas the Hoover Parks and Recreation Department provides residents and visitors with access to diverse recreational programs, including facilities, trails, green spaces, and community events that reflect the values and needs of our growing city. Whereas the department's dedicated team of professionals, volunteers, and partners work tirelessly to ensure that Hoover's parks and programs are safe, welcoming, and enriching for all, helping to build a more vibrant and connected community. Whereas July is recognized nationwide as Parks and Recreation Month, a time to celebrate the power of parks to bring people together, inspire play, and strengthen the bonds that make our cities thrive. Now therefore, we bring Ricardo Mayor and John B. Ly, the City Council President, and on behalf of the Hoover City Council, to hereby proclaim July of 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Hoover, and encourage all residents to recognize the vital role of parks and recreation play in our community, and to join us in celebrating how we build together, play together.
Good evening, thank you for the recognition. We like to think every month is Park and Rec Month because of all the things we offer for our residents and visitors. We've got a wide variety of things that we offer each and every day, activities, programs, from toddlers to seniors, everything in between. We have over 30 parks and public spaces. So our challenge to everyone before the end of the month is to try something new. Try new activity, visit a new park you haven't been to before, just try something new and see something that you haven't seen before. We've got a lot of team members here that work hard each and every day for our community that would love to tell you about something new to do. So see one of them if you'd like to. And then I would like to thank you all for all the support you give us each and every day so we can serve our community in this way. And I would like to thank our park board members and our Park and Recreation Foundation members that support us throughout each day as well. And now I would like to invite Lynn Cummings to make some remarks. She's our park board president.
Thank you, Erin. First of all, I want to thank Mayor, City Council, all of you so very much for recognizing. And I'd like to thank our board members and all of Erin's team. They are such a pleasure to work with each month. And there's several of us on the board that have been doing this for a number of years, and it's always been a pleasure. And we just thank you so very much for giving us this time and this recognition.
Ms. Cornet now has a financial update.
Good evening, members of the council and members of the cabinet. My name is Stephen Von Hegel, and I'm an insurance member of the BMS. You all used to see Keith Barfield with a much longer beard than I have. Keith is retired and I'm taking on the responsibilities that he had. The BMS, we are proud of the longstanding relationship with the city of Hoover and serving as your external auditor. The fiscal year 2024 audit report, which Jennifer's about to present, showed an unmarked by opinion, was translated to the highest level of assurance we can give on the city's financial statements. Our issue date was almost two months ahead of the issue date of fiscal year '23, and we are pleased to report no disagreements with city management related to audit. And we're very grateful to Mayor Ricardo, Jennifer Cornet, and the entire accounting and finance staff, members who aided our team in the professional manner. We would like to turn things over to Jennifer now.
Okay, I'd like to direct council's attention to the bound copies of the ACFR, our annual comprehensive financial report. You will notice there are some colorful flags on the pages. The information that's going to be on the PowerPoint, just so you don't have to turn around and crane your hand, to look at that screen, you can see the actual pages in the report. But a summary set of information has been prepared for this delivery of this information publicly. Okay, so first of all, on the next slide, I'd like to first of all thank the BMS for being patient with us over the last couple of years. I have been very grateful to have repeat auditors here who had had information just related to the city that they could help kind of help us connect dots. And so very thankful for the extra time and attention, and of course their knowledge of all of our staff. Pretty much everybody in the Finance Department participated in some way with the information requests. I want to thank really everybody in the Finance Department. There were a handful of key contributors, one of which is here tonight, Melissa Woods, recognize that name from years past, but also Claire Hamilton and Bradley Nestor were really in the trenches in providing most of the information, answering questions, that kind of thing. So a big shout out to them for hanging in there and wrapping up this engagement. So a link to the actual ACFR is embedded into that PowerPoint slide, which will be, this will be uploaded to the website, and then a live link direct to the ACFR will be there as well. But before we get too much into the actual ACFR, I kind of wanted to just go over the three parts real quick. This is a really big report, it's fat, there's 166 pages, there's three sections, and I'm really going to hit maybe six of the pages of the 166 that represent the financial pieces. But really, this whole report is a comprehensive, it gives you comprehensive information about the city's financial position. We have the letter of transmittal, and also your names are in the report as the elected officials that presided over the city in the decision-making. We did get the GFOA annual award, and I wanted to go ahead and talk about what that is. The GFOA Certificate of Excellence, Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is given by the Government Finance Officers Association, so the GFOA. It is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. And the purpose of this award is to recognize governments who publish an easily readable and efficiently organized comprehensive financial report that meets the program's standards, which includes keeping in line with generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP, legal requirements, and also demonstrating a spirit of full disclosure. And so we did receive the GFOA award. That's always awarded in our rear, so this was based on our 2023 report, and we've submitted an application and are hopeful that we will get the award again based on what is presented to you tonight in the form of the 2024 ACFR. So we have these three sections. The financial section is where you're going to find the independent auditor's report, where Stephen mentioned having a report that has, that is offered at the highest level of assurance is huge for the city, and so we're certainly happy to have that. The management discussion and analysis is really a nice summary of what happened during the year. It is management's spin, so to speak, on the things that happened financially to the city. So if you're up for a quick read, or you want a quick study on what's been going on with the city and what's contained in the report, probably reading the management discussion and analysis, and then looking at the basic financial statements in connection with the notes to the financial statements, which a lot of people don't ever want to look at. But those notes really do a great job of explaining kind of what's behind the numbers, and can really give you some quality information there. The final section is the statistical section, okay? So tonight, I'm really going to spend most time looking at the basic financial statements, referencing those notes. So to that end, on the next slide, I'd like to talk about the statement of net position. So this statement is what we often refer to as the government-wide financial statements. It provides a comprehensive view of the overall financial health, and it's really used to assess the long-term financial stability of the city. So it's the statement of net position where you're going to find the long-lived assets, right? So all of the assets and infrastructure of the city, along with the related accumulated depreciation. That's kind of a distinguishing mark of the statement of net position over the balance sheet for the governmental funds. That's kind of one of the differences. The other difference is that that is where our debt sits. So all of our long-term debt sits at the government-wide. So those two things represent the biggest differences in the statement of net position and in the governmental financial statements that we're going to look at in a minute. So pages 36 to 37 is where you're going to find the statement of net position and the statement of activities. Our total net position for the year was $325.6 million. This was a decrease of $5.1 million, or 1.6% over last year. And our net position for governmental activities is broken down by, for governmental activities, 18.6, and then business-type activities, which includes our proprietary funds of 6.9 million. When we look at our net position, this also includes $277.4 million of total net investment in capital assets, okay? So on the next slide, as we take a look, and this would be on page 36 of the books, you see the statement here is presented as a summarized presentation. So all the current assets, all the non-current assets are grouped together and not outlined here on this slide, but in the actual report that you have in front of you, you'll see those differences. So one of the things I want to point out about the total assets for the city, the total assets include, well, your current assets rather, of $267.7 million. Of those current assets, $240.9 million of that is pooled cash and investments, okay? So your current assets for the city are very liquid, 240 out of 267. When we look at the non-current assets, that's where you're going to see your capital assets, net, and depreciation. So $391 million of capital assets are sitting there in the non-current asset category that's shown here, for a total of $660 million in total assets at the government-wide level. When you look at your liabilities, so let's talk about that. Your liabilities are going to include, and our long-term debt is going to be included in this, it's a pretty big number, total liabilities of $385 million. So this debt captures all kinds of debt, okay, including pension liability, other pension employment benefits liability, both of which are pretty good, compensated absence liabilities, those are really substantial amounts. Also in that number, you're going to find our notes payable and our bonds payable, okay? So at the end of the year, we have a total of $183 million in bonds payable. 167 of that existed in the general fund, and about 16 million of that was in the sewer fund. For notes payable, also included in the total liability number, $4.9 million in various notes payable. And that also included $5.3 million worth of lease liabilities. So on the next page, you will see the statement of activities. And one of the things about this statement on page 38 of your books is to show that we do have some program revenues that come in and defray the cost of taking care of the government activities. But as we can see, that is not enough to be able to take care of all of the government activity expenditures that we have for the city. So that is why we need revenues from the city, so we're talking about tax dollars, right, to support the city. Again, net position, end of year, for governmental activities, $318.6 million. And the business-type activities, net position at the end of the year, $6.9. So moving on to talk about the governmental funds, okay? And the governmental funds statements include both the balance sheet and the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. When we look at that statement, you're going to notice the format of that looks a lot like the financial statements that are delivered to you on the interim. So we really use on a day-to-day basis to govern the city, the government funds statements to be able to do that, okay? So these statements provide information about the flow and availability of resources we're spending in the near term, right? So we have a short-term focus here on the fiscal management of the city. So on the government fund statement, we have pooled cash investments of $223 million at the general fund level, right? And that is the fund where all of the expenditures that are paid out to run the government come out of. We ended with $81.3 million in the general fund. Our total fund balance for all governmental funds was $228 million, and that's going to include our capital projects funds, okay, and also our bond funds from the 2023 issued. And then the general fund revenues ticked up almost 6% this year to $181.3 million. We posted an excess of revenues over expenditures of a little over $21 million. So as we look at the next slide, where we have the balance sheet for the governmental funds, right, there's our columns for each of our fund balances. The general fund on the far left, again, that is the main fund that we use to provide resources to run the city. Capital projects is a separate fund, right, that is, it represents amounts that have been designated towards particular projects at the approval of council. So we keep track of those there and account for those in a separate fund. We have the bond funds, right, so what's remaining of those bond proceeds and the fund balance there in another column. And then our non-major governmental funds include those special revenues, that are those earmarked funds for particular purposes, and some of our non-major grant funds. So all four of those are rolled together in those total government funds that you see at the right. So from a total governmental fund standpoint, we ended up $247.6 million in total liabilities and fund balance, $224.8 million in total fund balance. But you see the respective fund balances, $81.3 for the general fund, $55.9 for the capital projects, $70.5 for the bond funds, and then $17.1 for the non-majors there. One of the things that I wanted to comment about, because on this statement, you see different categories of fund balance with different naming conventions, and I kind of wanted to explain what those were. So we have restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned, okay? So restricted means that there is some outside body that has said, this is what you have to do with these funds, okay? So when we look across that line for restricted, and we see the $70.5 million under the bond funds, that's restricted for the purposes of that official statement from when we issued the bonds, has to be used for those capital projects that were identified in that OS and then modified later by council. And under the non-major governmental funds, the $17.3 million, remember, those are special revenues for particular purposes coming in from outside of here designated for particular purposes. So that's where our restricted funds are, okay, are in the bond fund and in the non-majors. Our committed funds, so committed funds represent formally committed by this body funds for particular purposes. So that's why the capital projects fund balance is shown as committed, because you guys said, hey, we're committing this amount of money to be able to do these particular projects, okay? And then the amount of commitment in the general fund that is committed is the budget stabilization fund that was still in place at the end of 2024. Assigned, the last category, okay? So assigned means earmarked for a particular purpose, okay, but not really set in stone, but earmarked, okay? So this is where you're going to find, and I think I even have a page number earmarked for you. See if I can find it. Did not earmark the page number. Okay, I can find it for you later. But a good amount of money has been earmarked for a library, $2.9 million is earmarked for recreation services, and then there's $2.4 in total earmarked for public safety, and that's due to the federal inmate funds and also the emergency transport services that the fire department does, okay? So that's what makes up those categories, in case you were wondering. On the next slide, for, and again, this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for governmental funds, right? So each of those four classes of funds that we just talked about reflecting the revenues, the expenditures, and really the explanation of how those fund balances changed. So for our total government funds, our revenues were $199.5 million, and we had total expenditures of $212. Now, that is a sum of all of those funds, so really, I think it's really better to look at the funds in isolation, to see how each of those funds is doing. The general fund itself posted a $21.2 million excess of revenues over expenditures. Now, there were a number of adjustments that happened to that excess related to transfers, related to accounting for proceeds from settled capital assets and the issuance of leases, and our speed of leases as well. But the point is that our general fund balance changed by $10.5 million during the year. So it went from $70.8 million to $81.4. With our capital projects fund and other bond funds, notice that that change in fund balance is a negative number. This is something that you would expect to see if you were working aggressively on your capital projects and spending down those funds, right? The amount that comes into capital projects specifically usually comes in by way of transfer from the general fund, and we were real careful this past year to kind of wrap up some of the projects that we're having works and not allocate dollars to new projects. With the bond funds, we know we got all those funds in whenever we issued the bonds in 2023, and so we should expect that fund balance to kind of come down as we spend those funds. Okay, on the next slide, okay, we're getting close, the proprietary funds, all right? So these are funds that operate a lot like a business. We use the accrual basis of accounting, that's what makes the presentation of the proprietary fund statements look a little bit different. Our two types of funds that we have here are enterprise and internal service funds. And underneath the enterprise umbrella, we have the sewer and redevelopment fund. And then the internal service funds are those funds that are used to really serve the city. So we have two health insurance funds, because we're self-insured, one for active employees and one for retirees. We have a worker's comp fund, and then a property and casualty fund. So on the next slide, the balance sheet, right, for our enterprise funds is shown here. With the sewer, let's take the sewer first. So most of the assets in the sewer, it's probably not a big surprise, would be infrastructure, long-term asset-related, okay? So that's mostly what makes up the total assets in the sewer. And likewise, the total liabilities, mostly what makes up the total liabilities is the debt, the outstanding bond debt on the sewer, right? So the total net position of the sewer at the end of the year ended up $6.9 million. There's $68,000 left in the redevelopment fund, that has yet to be determined what council would like to do with that. Bringing our business-type activities, total net position to $6.9. And then our internal service funds, all taken together, total $4.8 million in total net position. On the next slide, you'll see the revenues, expenditures, and changes in net position for these proprietary funds. So one of the things in particular that's interesting with sewer is that this year, our revenues increased by $444,000 over last year, a 9.5% increase. Now, keep in mind, these are collections, right, for sewer, and we believe that this is the result of the graduated rate increases that were enacted a few years ago, finally catching up and coming in. So our revenues were a little bit more than last year, and then our expenditures also were $374,000 less. That can be a little misleading, because predominantly was a lower, there was a lower charge for depreciation. So as our assets in the sewer depreciate more, then there's less available life to use up, then those depreciation charges kind of come down over time. But the combination of more revenues and less expenses for this year meant that there was a $90,000 loss in the sewer. So we ended net position for the sewer, $6.8 million. In the redevelopment fund, you might remember, so $1 million of that was transferred out to the general fund to pay the cash incentive for, or partially pay for part of the cash incentive for Riverwalk the first year. So that's now down to $68,232, for a total of $6.9 for enterprise funds. And then our internal service funds ended at the $4.8 million. On the next slide, have summary. So all in all, the city has a decent economic outlook with our unemployment rate being below state and metro averages. The expectation is that residential and commercial development will help maintain revenues that are coming into the city, and definitely a conservative budget philosophy will that are coming into the city, and definitely a conservative budget philosophy will help aid with that. Wanted to point out, kind of in closing, the city still maintains its good bond rating. So we have a triple A from standard and fours and an AA1 for moves that has not changed. And the last point that I want to make was about the constitutional debt limit. So this is a calculation that's always required whenever you go to market to issue new bonds, you know? Constitutional debt limit relates to the total amount you could borrow. No city in their right mind should ever borrow the constitutional debt limit. I would argue they would not be able to survive, but, so I need to say that. But that limit is basically set at 20% of the assessed value of the city. Our debt that's applicable to that limit is 192, so we have a margin between the constitutional debt limit and where we are right now of 382 million, which I would call pretty healthy. So that was a lot of information. Y'all have some questions?
Any questions or comments? I don't know if there's a lot of reading material here, far more than she will notice tonight.
It is a lot. I did flag some of the note disclosures that I thought might be of interest to y'all. So particularly related to the debt, Councilman Clinton was interested in that, and so I flagged that so that you could see that. One of the questions that might be in your mind would be, is there a way to lower the amount of debt that the city has? Because I know there has been some conversation and some concern about that in certain circles. And so one of the things that I wanted to point out, related to borrowings with bonds and long-term borrowings. So long-term borrowings, you know, until there is a call provision, you're kind of locked in to the payments that you make. And so the payments that we made, our debt service issue was higher than it's been. That was not the result of decisions that were made this year or a year before, a year before that, but was rather a combination of decisions made from the past that set those wheels, those things in motion. And so in looking at our bond debt, we do have a couple of bond issues. Should we decide that we've wanted to retire some debt, that would be callable, right? And what that means is that we could stock the interest and pay those bonds off. So one of them is the 2014 bonds, which are attached to the sewer. And I don't think that I would recommend that the city use general fund revenues to just pay off the sewer debt, okay, for that reason. The other one is the 2020 bond issue. There is an amount that is callable, but the incremental borrowing rate on that is less than 1%. And right now, we're enjoying a much higher rate of return on investments. And so it'd be hard for me to argue to retire either one of those. The rest of the bonds are, they're not callable for a while. We could extinguish the debt of our notes payable if y'all wanted to for a little under $5 million, okay? So that would be an option. Our notes payable, if we don't borrow any more money, which I will not want to recommend, but our notes payable will fully pay out, and I think the last one pays out in 2027. But we could, that could be a choice if we wanted to lower our debt on our balance sheet and go ahead and stock the interest on those. That would be an option. I'm trying to think. There was one other concern about the proceeds from leases possibly inflating our fund balance. And one of the things I want to say about that is, I know that when we do the, GASV87 requires you to book a right-of-use asset and a right-of-use liability. And then you also, at the fund level, record the lease proceeds and capital outlay, okay? And the effect of both of those things is a wash on the balance sheet and a wash on the statement of activities. So it might look like the lease proceeds is kind of buoying up the general fund balance. It's not really true, because there's capital outlay that's been subtracted, and the expenditures to offset that. So I'm just trying to think if there were any other questions that I heard from individual folks over the last bit. Yeah?
Well, since you mentioned it, how much is the sewer debt currently if we were to pay off?
So the sewer debt, right, is on your report, 16.3 million?
How much?
16.3 million. And sewer debt?
Thank you. Any other comments? You hear this report is online and available for the public through city, so if you'd like to go and get this exact book, you're more than welcome to online. Thank you, Mr. President. We'll now move to the consent agenda, which of course is presented as a block of items we have each item read and voted on with one motion and one vote, unless of course a member of the body, a member of the public who would like to have it approved. I'd ask first if a member of the body would like it. One through eleven to be removed?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Please remove item seven and eight.
Seven and two. Any other items from the council? Very good. If you remember the public here would like to remove the item.
Remove the payment.
Number one, item seventeen, we have a member of the public here. I'm sure he'll read the consent agenda item and accept the one, seven, and two.
Item two approves the amendments from the June 2023, 2025 council meeting. Item number three, resolution 850325 approves a 020 restaurant retail liquor alcohol license for J&amp;B BH LLC, doing business as Bombs, located at 3601 Market Street, Suite 101, Hoover Alvin. Resolution 850425 approves a 160 special retail more than 30 days alcohol license for Path M's LLC, doing business as Path M's, located at 5844 Elsie Road, Hoover Alvin. Resolution 8505-25 approves a 040 retail beer on our off-premises and 060 retail table wine on our off-premises alcohol license for Ho Real Estate LLC, doing business as Pimi Sushi Poke, located at 2539 John Hawkins Parkway, Suite 141, Tattersall Boulevard, Hoover Alvin. Resolution 850925 accepts reimbursement from the United States Secret Service for the sale of private software in the amount of $10,150 and amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, as shown in Exhibit A to the resolution. Resolution 8508-25 amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, as shown in Exhibit A to the resolution, revise or supplement product complex improvements in the amount of $145,000. Item nine, resolution 8512-25 authorizes Mayor Roca to, the Hoover Fire Chief, and the Hoover Chief Financial Officer to execute memorandum of understanding in the Center for Public Safety Excellence for the purpose of pursuing accreditation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. This resolution further authorizes the aforementioned individual to serve as accreditation manager. He shall successfully complete the CPSE's Quality Improvement for Fire and Emergency Services Workshop and the Peer Assessment Workshop. Item 11, resolution 851425 authorizes Mayor Roca to execute service agreement with the MS Hoover Foundation. And that concludes the session.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Second. Motion and approval, sorry, motion and second approval consent on the table.
Aye.
Close nay. I just have a question. I don't think about the one to pay the bill. Do you have a motion?
President, I'm going to pay the bill.
Second. Second to pay. Any questions from the body? Any comments from the body?
Mr. President, I move. I'm going to put aside my cynical ways, but there's been a lot of, more information provided on the payment of bills, and I think as long as that's a process that's beginning, a step in the right direction as opposed to a final, I think that's good. There's still not enough information to really determine if appropriate bills are being paid. There's a story that's on the local news station just in the last two days about how all these audits are revealing credit card abuse in all these cities, everything from Amazon to Disney Plus. And I still don't understand what the approval process is or who's looking at this. But there's two parts of this. One's going forward, and hopefully we're starting to pay more attention to that. But there's also the issue of going backwards. And I think when the new finance director started, she recommended there be an outside audit, and that really hasn't happened. There was this crow audit that very specifically limited what they had access to, and yet they still concluded that the environment of the city finances is ripe for fraud to occur. And what I'd like to ask the council to do is, Mr. Lada, if you would draft a letter, and ideally every member of the council sign it, and send it to the Examiners of Public Accounts and ask them to come do a proper audit of the city funds, I think that'll settle everything and put it to rest if there isn't any problems. And I'm glad that BMS is apparently back. They're a very fine accounting firm, but I noticed they're quoted in the paper saying that the type of audit they do does not even look at fraud. So I would hope by next week you can tell us that you sent a letter to the Examiners of Public Accounts, and I've spoken to them, and that's all it'll take for them to begin an audit. Real quickly, I don't know when the last time the city had a bond rating review. I think it was probably well before all this Riverwalk stuff and a lot of the indebtedness. I think it was probably before the reserves were rated, which I'm curious, on the bond funds, there's $70 million in the account unspent. But yet, there was something about it being too late to build a performing arts center. That just doesn't add up. I know a good bit of that bond money is supposed to be from the diamond exchange, and there's not even a final engineering plan for that. If it can be built, the performing arts center could be built with the bond funds. It just doesn't add up. Thank you.
Any other comments on the one to pay the bill? Got a motion and second for approval on the table.
Aye.
Close nay. Guys having a motion here. Is item seven, resolution number 8510-25?
This resolution amends the budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, as shown in Exhibit A, transport $50,000 from the Al Sire Road project to the Old Columbiana Road sidewalk project.
President, I move for approval, resolution number 8510-25.
Second. Motion and second for approval.
Yes, sir. Ms. Cornet, you mentioned $57 million allocated on citywide capital projects. You know, so last week I was driving down Highway 150 and noticed lanes pushing their trailer along 150, and I recall the sidewalks that we have improved in that area. So I had to call up and check on the status of that. So I say all that to say I'm asking for two quarterly reports, maybe again. One is a citywide capital projects list with the original allocated ones, and then as they finish up, what they finished up as. So as in this project, we, budgeted funds came in higher than the actual cost in the sidewalk. That occurs, thankfully, often enough where I think it would benefit the council to have that information, see what capital projects have finished and what came in over budget, that we have those funds, but someone else. So just a quarterly report, what I'm asking for.
Any other comments or questions?
Second.
Yes, sir.
There's one other quarterly report along the same lines of helping the council make these decisions going forward, facing incentive agreements, but we may have future incentive agreements. And it's a concern that we don't want to overextend ourselves too far in the future. So I would also like a quarterly report on all of incentive agreements. And with the original, you know, time period, say five or 10 years, the original maximum rebate, and then where they're currently standing, how many years are left, how much is left on the rebate? I think that'll help us make decisions moving forward. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Any comments from the public on the aisle? It's a motion and second for approval on the table. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Item seven, motion here. Is item ten, resolution number 8513-25?
This resolution authorizes the application by the Hoover Fire Department for the big staffing and adequate fire emergency response grant. This resolution further authorizes Mayor Roca to, Chief Bentley, to take all necessary administrative steps to apply for this grant.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number 8510-25.
Second. Motion and second for approval. I'd like to make remarks.
Yes, sir. So with this, I would first like to commend Chief Bentley, the Hoover Fire Department. Like a few years ago, maybe four years ago, we got notice that private ambulance services would no longer be available in the city of Hoover, almost on a day's notice. However, Hoover Fire Department did not give the beat. They put in an extra transport unit the very next day. But to do that, they robbed personnel from your engine companies to staff that extra transport. And keep in mind, the city of Hoover runs for the last four years four transport units, one in reserve, I believe. City of Asayi, I was, close to a third of our population, close to a third of our land mass, runs four transport units. Chiefs, I've commended you, and now I'd like to apologize to you. So for the last few years, you have been asking for funding for new transport units to get us up to five, and we have not valued that request enough in our opinion. So I hope you get this female stacking grant to get us up to five transport units. These are long hours, stressful hours. I think this will make a huge difference. And I'm also going to challenge this body to restock, resupply those engine companies that we stole those personnel from. So I'm going to recommend that you ask for something more in budgeting, because right now, the engine crews that we stole those personnel from have been a huge benefit to our community, but those engine crews are also a disband. It puts our public in dis. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? We have a motion and second for approval. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Guys having a motion here. Is that a report?
Resolution 8510-25 approves a purchasing policy policy procedures manual for the city of Hoover, as shown in the attached Exhibit A.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number 8507-25.
Second. A motion and second, Councilman Milbrook will be abstaining in the understanding.
Yes, sir.
Any comments or questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Steve McClendon?
This resolution declares Steve McClendon duly elected to the office of City Council Place Seven for the term of office commencing on the first Monday in November 2025. It authorizes Mayor Roca to issue a certificate of election, Steve McClendon, for the office of City Council Place Seven.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number 8507-25.
Second. A motion and second, Councilman McClendon will be abstaining in the understanding. Any questions, comments, or comments? Comments from the public? Steve, none? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Guys having a motion here. Is that a report?
Resolution 8515-25 approves a purchasing policy policy procedures manual for the city of Hoover, as shown in the attached Exhibit A.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution for 8507-25.
Second. A motion and second for approval. Any questions? Any comments from the body?
I think you have a question, Mr. President. The version that is in our packet, there's a headliner on it that says "Rethra" from June of 2025. Is that indeed the final graph, or is there a version after this one?
Yes.
Can you let go?
I wish I could see it. Yeah, it is the final. Yeah, I know it says "Rethra." We did not, we did not take that header off because... because we wanted to wait until it's approved to call it another draft. So.
So I'll just ask the question slightly differently.
Okay.
Do you have any changes that you and your staff wish to make to the June twenty twenty five version? Will you know when they get final? Will you? Okay.
Any question, any other questions, comments on the body? Any comments from the public tonight?
That's a good question. I would like, can I, can I, I know we talked about this during one session, but I, I know there's been some concern about the processes that are used for payments. And so I thought this might be a good time to kind of talk about it. So this policy and procedures manual is now a memorialized version of what the processes were already, that were already happening. Okay, so the point of having this is to have our processes memorialized and have responsibilities clearly delineated between who is responsible for what and who is looking at what. And so just generally speaking, with this policy, the departments, so it's at the department level where requisitions are made, and it goes through a variety of approval processes in the approval chain. Some, some approval chains are five different levels of approval, of approvals, depending on, and depending on the, the nature of the fund that you're talking about. So when I say goes through an approval process, it does happen in our accounting system. But there are backup, backup documentation that is added for each level of review to approve. So the department had approved it, and then it moves on, it comes through purchasing, gets approved. That process is a, is a good process. And it is the same process that we follow anytime charges are made either on the American Express or the city, or on other city credit cards, which we only have eight or nine of those that are distributed. But in each case, every purchase that is made, there is a requisition, an approval process to document that those were approved, approved expenditures. And I can speak from experience because I went on a trip and I didn't save my Starbucks, the right Starbucks receipt. And I had to write a check to the city because there's nothing that gets past this procurement team in making sure that their, their i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So this is a good policy that I think establishes what the responsibilities are, who's doing what. It also gives us a little bit of leg so that when there's new people that are entering, entering the approval process, that they have kind of a handy manual to kind of know what, what it is when they're pushing that approve button, what that means, right? So, so this is a, this is a good step towards having documentation about the processes that we follow so that we make sure that we're spending public dollars properly. So I'm really proud of the, the team that put this together. It took a lot of work. It's been through multiple internal reviews, power use of reviews. Sorry.
Any other comments from the body? Any comments from the public tonight? I'll argue with them.
Yes, Mr. President. Pauline, from the book again, and I just wanted to clarify, I think it's great these procedures are in place now. But they weren't here for the last several years. And the crow audit, the crow audit says there were papers missing, documents missing, they couldn't be restored, and an environment for fraud existed. I hope it feels great going forward, but I think an examiner's of public accounts audit would make everyone feel better and know what was going on the last couple of years because there's obviously a lot of missing issues or little blind spots that I'd like to get filled in. Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's have the, we have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Guys have a motion here. It's item fifteen, resolution number eight five one six dash two five.
This resolution approves an employee travel reimbursement policy procedure for the city of Hoover as shown in exhibit A.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight five one six dash two five.
Second.
The motion is second for approval.
Yes, again, I just, well, I wanted, I wanted to elaborate on the travel policy that, again, this is another attempt to memorialize good practices that are already in place. Not a whole lot of heavy lifting or change was made, but we did clarify some things. Updated the language to reflect actual modes of transportation that still exist. And so again, the, the travel reimbursement policy addresses what is permitted to be reimbursed to employees when they travel, okay? And again, you work, we worked through the requisition process and terminated receipts. And there's an elaborate review of those receipts that goes through multiple levels of approval. So again, this is a demonstration of, you know, documentation rather of what is already being done. And I, I just want to clarify something on the, the former point on the other policy. And that is that this was to memorialize a process that was in place. Under no circumstance did the crow review indicate that we were not, we did not have appropriate backup for transactions. So that was other files that didn't have to do with our financial accounting system. So the material change to this policy was we did increase the daily amount. Previously, it'd been forty dollars for in-state for the whole day, and sixty-five dollars for out-of-state if you were traveling. And so it's kind of hard to get through meals in Washington DC for sixty-five dollars a day. So we just, we upped the daily limit to eighty-five dollars. And again, this is not up for dim. This is where receipts have to be attached, detailed receipts. And, and there will be questions if there's two coffees on your receipt and you're just one person. So, so again, these are, these are detailed receipts and expense requests that are submitted.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Cornet on the other?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a similar question to the last item, just for clarity on the record. This item is also marked as draft July twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Is that the final draft that you wish for this policy to approve?
Yes. We would like to approve this document and then call it adopted, and it will be, it'll be a final policy.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, any other comments? Any questions from the public on the side?
Ken King, Rossbridge Parkway. I'm listening, and I'm a little confused. I'm hoping you can ask it, Larry, Ms. Cornet. So the award that the city received twenty twenty-three, I'm assuming that was shortly or after you got here. You saw that the processes and procedures were so exemplary that you submitted the city of Hoover for a recognition or an award from some type of body or organization that recognizes the gold standard in terms of accounting processes. Am I so far so good? All right. So, so, so then you, you submit the city in recognition for this. And then shortly after that, ask for a forensic audit because you have some questions around the processes that are currently in place. So they conduct the forensic audit and then find the city ripe for fraud. And so today, we stand up and pat ourselves on the back because in twenty twenty-three, we apparently had processes that were recognized by an organization. But yet, a few months later, we were found that we had a bunch of processes that we, that were failing, that were adequate. In fact, I recall, you know, part of the last six months, what you've been doing is basically standing up, giving a full report about the things that we changed and all the things that we addressed in the crow audit. So I'm just trying to figure out which one is. Initially, things are so great, let's submit the city for an award, get up here tonight, pat ourselves on the back. Twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-three process was, were above standard. And we should be so proud of the work we were doing prior to twenty twenty-three, which is the same period of time that the crow audit found major defaults and deficits, deficiencies, right? So help me reconcile those things. And again, I know Mr. Lada won't allow you to speak, but it's a fair question. How do you ask to be awarded and then ask for a forensic audit that we have found to be ripe for fraud? And then stand up tonight again and say, let's be celebratory about what we were able to do leading up to twenty twenty-three. Which one is it? Was the, was the prior CFO that appears you've been trying to, to lay all the, the inadequacies of your department at their feet for the last six months? Was it, was it, were they running a stellar operation or not? Because I'm confused at this point. I don't understand how we are awarded an award and then six months later found to be ripe for fraud. And then stand up tonight, after we spent the last six months trying to fix those problems, pat ourselves on the back for an award we got in twenty twenty-three. Amazingly confusing. Again, maybe one of you guys can help get understanding. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. unanimous vote. Resolution number sixteen, resolution number eight five one seven two five.
This resolution accepts three deeds for dedication of properties for recreation and use to the city of Hoover-Alabama, acknowledging use restrictions and restricted covenants thereon, and authorizing replacement of restricted covenants on the Woodbury Park property.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight five one seven dash two five.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any comments on the body? Comments from the public? Steve, no. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is on now, has a series of public hearings during the marking of the document. While us with progress on grass and weeds, beginning of item seventeen, resolution number eight five one eight dash two five.
This resolution declares a weed nuisance and directs the abatement of such weed and other vegetation nuisance on the property located at twenty-four thirteen Regent Circle Hoover-Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight five one eight dash two five.
Second.
The motion and second, the courts discussed this on Thursday night. Mr. Mark agreed to come back and update us on any that we had seen progress on. I know we do have one coming up that has progressed. But I'll take it, Mr. Mark, number seventeen, at four twenty-five shade avenue, not very much.
Only progress here is the growth of the weeds and grass.
Any questions or comments on the body on the side? This is a public hearing. We will ask if any member of the public here is here to speak at the public hearing on behalf of four twenty-five shade avenue. Right. We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item number eighteen. Does it matter, Mr. Mark, that twenty-four five Cross Crest Drive has been cut during your discussion?
That is correct. This one has been self-corrected, twenty-four five Cross Crest Drive, and no longer in need of abatement.
We will have a motion to withdraw resolution number eight five one nine.
Mr. President, I move to withdraw resolution number eight five one nine dash two five.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item number nineteen, resolution eight five two zero dash two five.
This resolution declares a weed or other vegetation nuisance and directs the abatement of such nuisance on the property located at twenty-four thirteen Regent Circle Hoover-Alabama.
Mr. President, I move to, for the approval of resolution number eight five two zero dash two five.
Second.
The motion is second for approval?
Yes, sir. This location is still in violation of our weed and grass ordinance.
If we will open a public hearing, ask if any member of the body would like to speak on this item. If none, remember the public here to speak on twenty-four thirteen Regent Circle. So you have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item number twenty, resolution number eight five two one dash two five.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance and grass the abatement of such nuisance on the property located at thirty-four fifty-six Blueberry Lane Hoover-Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight five two one dash two five.
Second.
The motion is second for approval, Mr. Mark.
Yes, sir. This property is also still in violation as of today.
Any comments from the body on the side? Remember the public here for the public hearing regarding thirty-four fifty-six Blueberry Lane. Close the public hearing. We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item number ten, resolution number eight four eight one dash two five.
This resolution authorizes the abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at twenty-one twenty-five Tyler Lane Hoover-Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight four eight one dash two five.
Second.
Tuffalo's the mayor won't manage it.
Yes, sir. Weeds and grass are still in violation at this location. And in fact, the, the home itself is in terrible shape. There's been a tree that has fallen on the home, and it is not secure. The elements have gotten in. It's in a, a state where the home itself is, is nuisance. And we do anticipate bringing as part of our budget request next year, an appropriate amount to abate the home itself. But as of right now, the weeds and grass are in violation.
Abatement of the home is a rare occurrence. It does, thankfully, let's entertain that. Any questions or comments on the other? Public hearing. Remember the public here to speak on behalf of twenty-four thirteen Tyler. See none. We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item number twenty-two, resolution number eight four eight two dash two five.
This resolution authorizes the abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at twenty-one fifty-two Archmark Circle Hoover-Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight four eight two dash two five.
Second.
The motion is second for approval, Mr. Mark.
Yes, sir. As of today, this property is also in violation. I do have an update on this site. Due to his Herculean efforts, Mr. Robert Mack has managed to trap down a niece who stands to inherit this property and has made them aware of its current condition. And we do anticipate the niece having the property cut. We will, of course, request that the council go forward with the abatement at this time, just to be on the safe side so we don't have to start the process over. But we will be working with that next of kin to try to get this cut so the city does not have to. Also, there was a, a vehicle that was inoperable on the site, and it was a separate nuisance case that we had, and that has been removed. So just a quick status update on this property.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the body? Any member of the public here to speak on the Archmark, Archmark Circle address? See none. We have a closing public hearing. We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item twenty-three, resolution number eight four eight three dash two five.
This resolution authorizes abatement of the weed and other vegetation nuisance at twenty-three thirty-seven Tyler Road Hoover-Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight forty dash two five.
Second.
The motion is second for approval, Mr. Mark.
Yes, sir. On this particular case, there were portions of the yard that were cut, but the property as a whole was not completely cut, and we still have weeds and grass in violation of our ordinance here.
Any questions or comments from the body on the other? Any member of the public here to speak on behalf of two three three seven Tyler? Close the public hearing, but the motion is second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item twenty-four, resolution number eight four eight four dash two five.
This resolution authorizes abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at twenty-eight eighty-two Wisteria Drive Hoover-Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution number eight four eight four dash two five.
Second.
The motion is second for approval. Any member of the body? Any member of the public here to speak? The public here. See none. We have a closing hearing. Two seconds for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is item twenty-five, resolution eight four eight five dash two five.
This resolution grants conditional use approval for operation of an indoor golf facility for property located at twenty-eight fifteen Greystone Commercial Boulevard Hoover-Alabama with conditions shown on exhibit two of the resolution.
Mr. President, I move to approve resolution number eight four eight five dash two five.
Second.
The motion is second for approval. The skinage reuse also requires a public hearing. You remember the body reached a sound. Call me up with a question. Any member of the public here who is to speak on behalf of this item? See none. We have a closing public hearing. We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nice habit. The motion here is, we had a hearing through first reading, but no action expected, right? Mr. Mark, I know they discussed the work session on Thursday, of course, we have another program in two weeks' time to consider these items for possible book, item twenty-six, resolution number eight five zero one dash two five.
This resolution authorizes abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at thirteen oh one Darius Street Hoover-Alabama. Public hearing is scheduled for July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Resolution eight five zero two two five authorizes abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at thirty-four sixty Sheila Drive. abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at 3460 Schula Drive, Hoover, Alabama. The public hearing is scheduled for July 28, 2025. And finally, ordinance number 252678, approves annexation of property located at 3721 South Shades Crest Road, per the described in Exhibit 1 of the ordinance, and authorizes the mayor to execute any documents necessary to effectuate such annexation. Public hearing will be held on July 28, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. That brings us to the end of our agenda. We'll entertain any comments, questions from the body tonight. And open up the public comment. If you want the public here, like, make a comment before we adjourn. Very good. Thank you for your attendance. Your answer.